First of all, thank you for allowing us to wake up this morning, God. Giving us a opportunity to serve the country with so many freedoms that we have, God. We thank you for that, something that we do not take for granted. God, we thank you for the ability to come and guide and assimilate God. And most importantly, to discuss the people's business and take care of people's business, God. We ask that you give us tremendous insight, God, and we do not do anything that's not pleasing in your eyesight. God, we ask that you continue to bless this city, God, continue to bring back unity, God, and make us a city of truth, we, Tompa, God. We thank you again for the blessings that you bestowed upon us as individuals. These many blessings we ask in your name, Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Gordon.
Robbins.
Here.
Gill.
Here.
Thornton.
Here.
Gant.
Here.
Jones.
Here.
Okay, you received reading back in a couple of minutes of the meeting in Illinois on Monday, April eighteen, twenty sixteen. Any corrections? Do we have a motion to approve?
Second.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
All in fact, living on say an aye?
Aye.
You don't want to oppose? Okay, those minutes have been approved. Under old business, ordinance twenty sixteen dash four, ordinance to divide the city of Wetumpah into five council districts and to provide for the election of a councilperson in each district and to provide for the election of the mayor at large. This is a second reading, so this can take action.
Mayor, I move to adopt the ordinance twenty sixteen dash four.
Okay, we have a motion to adopt the ordinance. Do we have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second.
Is that the large mayor or a mayor at large?
Councilmember Robbins.
Yes.
Gill.
Yes.
Thornton.
Yes.
Gant.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, that ordinance has been approved. Under new business, request for this to change the contract for gas monitoring wells to carb neutral engineering incorporated of the landfill at a cost of four hundred and eighty dollars semi-annual. Of the public works, he was asked that we suspend the rules tonight and move forward with this program. Do we have a motion to suspend the rules?
Mayor, I'd like to make the motion to suspend the rules and this and another item that the public works director has requested.
I'm going to need two motions.
Okay, then I'll make a motion.
Okay, we got two motions. Do we have a second?
Second.
Councilmember Robbins.
Yeah, discussion on this? Okay.
Councilmember Robbins.
Yes.
Gill.
Yes.
Thornton.
Yes.
Gant.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
That request to suspend the rules being granted, okay, do we have a motion to move forward or approve?
Motion to grant the permission.
Okay, thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Councilmember Robbins.
Yeah, discussion on this? Okay.
Councilmember Robbins.
Yes.
Gill.
Yes.
Thornton.
Yes.
Gant.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
That request to suspend the rules being granted, okay, do we have a motion to move forward or approve?
Motion to grant the permission.
Okay, thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Councilmember Robbins.
Yes.
Gill.
Yes.
Thornton.
Yes.
Gant.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Okay, that request has been granted. Then item two, approval sharing cost of drainage improvements. Approval sharing cost of drainage improvements at North Creek Street with the first Presbyterian Church of Wetumpah at a cost of fifteen thousand dollars.
First reading?
First reading. I have an item I would like to have added to the agenda tonight, resolution of the twenty sixteen dash five dash two dash one, emergency repairs of the front slope from the underground roadway on Compton Street approximately point twenty-five miles north of Green Street. It was filed by the City Council, City of Wetumpah, Illinois, as follows. The city of Illinois, the state of Alabama, hacked and buy through the Illinois Department of Factory for emergency repairs of the front slope from the underground roadway on Compton Street in Wetumpah approximately point two-five miles north of Green Street, LHW eight Saska, eight L two O one six dash zero one DDI R report, Wetumpah dash one, project ER dash nine zero one zero, ECP twenty-six dash fourteen dash sixteen, CBMS reference one zero 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 six five five eight one. Hope y'all got all that. That agreement be executed in the name of the city of Wetumpah by San Antonio Fore and Home, and the agreement be accepted by the city clerk, and is still in the city of Wetumpah fixed here to be further resolved upon completion of execution of the agreement by all parties, and a copy of such document be kept on record by the city clerk, but not be included just today. So we need permission from the mayor to, the permission to add this to the agenda. Do I have a motion to add this resolution to the agenda?
So, second.
Yeah, I have a motion to second add this resolution.
Was that Thornton, General? Councilmember Robbins.
Yes.
Gill.
Yes.
Thornton.
Yes.
Gant.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Now, to the resolution itself, do we have a motion to approve the resolution?
I might not motion for the resolution.
Do we have a second? Okay, we have a motion, we have a second.
Councilmember Robbins.
Yes.
Gill.
Yes.
Thornton.
Yes.
Gant.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Thank you for adding that. Do you have any questions?
Basically, this means the company should be open?
No, that's not this, but this project is the sort of where Green Street comes in.
This is paperwork from the last project. They just now get that. But it could encompass some of the other repairs. Now, we're still, we're still not moving on that.
Oh, that's what, when they move the water line. This is, okay, I got it.
This link washed out on the opposite side of the road.
Okay, that's the reason it's closed. No, across the door. Okay, item three, hire part-time employee curator of Black History Museum.
I'd like to offer a motion that we enter into a joint venture with the Illinois County Association of Black Carriages to hire a curator for the Black History Museum.
Okay, you have a motion to hire a curator for the Black History Museum. Do you have a second?
Mayor, I would say that the city attorney was playing with her explanation to the council and to do anything different. I think, as Councilman Gill said, enter into talks is the right thing to do at this point. So therefore, so the motion dies for lack of second.
Mayor, you didn't really state my motion correctly. My motion was to look at to hire a, look into a joint venture to hire a curator. I didn't say for the city to hire a curator.
I read it just like I'm writing over.
That, that's not my, that's not my motion. My motion is to, as the, as the city attorney explained tonight, I, as the city attorney interpreted what she sent tonight, keep in mind, that was sent last week. The city attorney sent her explanation to us today. So as she sent her explanation, I responded anytime with saying, let's look at a joint venture with the Illinois County Area Association, or the Association of Black Carriages. So that was my motion.
So you're really requesting our term to research a deal, label to join.
No, no, that's not, no, I requested exactly what I said. I said, let's do a joint venture, public private partnership, to hire a curator. So that means we enter into a contract with the nonprofit. Is that illegal?
It's not on the agenda. No, it's not illegal.
Okay, but based on the information you said, that's what I'm, that's what my motion is.
Okay, but that's not what's on the agenda.
Mayor, I, again, I responded to the information that I got. What I submitted on the agenda was prior to, was prior to getting the information I got from the city attorney today. So I couldn't send something that I wasn't aware of. I couldn't put something on the agenda that I just got information about today.
Okay, you want to carry this over to the next meeting? Let's carry on.
Fair, that's.
So next outside of the fold, hire a qualified parks and recreation director.
I'd like to offer a motion that we hire a qualified parks and rep, hire a qualified parks and recre, directors for the next budget due to passing and have a discussion about that at our next council meeting.
Do you have a motion? Do you have a second?
Second.
You have a discussion.
I would like to ask Coach and Tex, is there something we need now in this position? Or can this wait?
Oh, good.
So your question.
Is this a position that the city needs at this point in time, considering that we're at fifty-three percent budget on our employees and it should really be around forty-eight and forty-nine percent? Is this a huge priority at this time? Or is this something we can consider in the future?
Kevin, I'm not trying to detract the question, but I don't have all the information on your budget to really answer that question correctly. So I don't know what your, the city's budget looks like in order to be honest and accurate.
I understand. Is this, is this an urgent need of the city, I guess, then? For our, an urgent person? Are we?
In my opinion, we need to finish, the city needs to finish sports place and the, to include the soccer fields and get that to the point that we have everything we're going to operate and then, I don't think at this point we are even capable of handling the terms that been mentioned earlier about the accommodations in the city and various items.
Thank you.
That's, that's my opinion.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second. We have a discussion. Hold it, second. Okay. All available, if we're going to follow with the hire qualified park director, do we have an office saying aye?
Aye.
If, if those opposed?
Aye.
No.
Those opposed. Okay, item five, get a structural assessment for hope for renovation of teachers home for the sports complex slash Dr. MLK junior local conference center.
Mayor, can I like to offer a motion that we do whatever's legal to get a structural assessment for the teachers home at the MLK multiple.
Second.
May I ask a question? According to this, if it's legal, they're taking out to you, if the board makes decision and expensive decisions made, they're doing that and not sit.
Is, is their responsibility, but they have, if we, they can't get a consent, so if, you know, for making commitments for whatever, then they will be nothing to do. But the Lee City will be the ones to coordinate with the structural engineer.
If this is a free gratis inspection, why do we have to take action?
My understanding that the board has to get permission from the council for any structural or any kind of changes, is that not my understanding of the?
In the lease, it should be covered according to this.
But in the lease, it clearly says that the museum board needs to get permission from the council before they make any kind of changes, unless I just read that.
Marry, can I contribute something?
So if this is, if this is going to be a structural engineer and we know that the floor is going to have to be secured, I mean, it's, so you don't get a structural engineer and it says, okay, well, you don't need to do it. We know that the floor needs work, but we just need to get clear guidance as to what needs to happen. So the best way to do that, I wouldn't just go up there and start jacking up stuff. So given my correct here, Mr. Tex, we need to have some type of guidance as to what, what we're building to make sure it's done properly.
I think your words on what you said, Lee City can make improvements, alterations, and additions subject to the city's consent approval. This is not any of those. This is looking at the safety factor of the building.
But again, how can you say it's not?
In the past, if I might add what you just said, you're right, but what we've done in the past in this type of situation, when I was in building department, is we had the, if you wanted to have the structural done, that the Black Carriages want to do the structural, which is what you stated.
Right.
Then once they got the report, that report would need to come to our building official and he would need to look at it, approve it, and make recommendations or, or approve the recommendations that were made by the structure.
So, so if I'm understanding you correctly, you're saying that there's no need to get permission from the city to get a structural assessment? Okay, so now, my personal feelings about that would have been if they would have went ahead and got that done, someone said, well, who gave you authority?
They have authority. They have authority.
But that's not what the lease says, Mayor. You just read that.
It says authority, you have to get permission.
A structural assessment is work.
They're not changing the building.
But that is work, to, to go out and assess, you have to physically go and look at, you have to see what's going on. You just don't wave a wand and know what's wrong. You have to go physically assess the property.
I, I think.
It's, I just wanted to give permission.
Can we move on to get this assessment?
Okay, so is the Lee City's responsibility to get it settled?
I just wanted to know that the city would be okay with getting.
That's fine.
So then we go a little bit on now to item six, which is establish football and soccer fields. Are you okay on the report that you have?
We got a report, and now my motion was being made that we, at our next council meeting, that we have a work session.
It can be added in the work session?
Well, certainly can be added in the work session.
Okay, and then item seven, research splash pad installation and cooperation.
And I'd like to offer a motion that the city do the initial research to see what the cost would be for splash pad installation at the MLK.
Okay, Coach, I know you've worked on this already. You've looked at different ones, you've looked at different pricing.
Various costs for, for commercial splash pads, they got from eighty to a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. The one in Tuscaloosa was, was too big, I guess, I mean, that's the reason why it was so costly. But I think the one that, that Mr. Gill, and again, I haven't seen them in person, I've seen pictures of them, but I think one that would be appropriate would range in between eighty and a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars.
What I would like to do is ask Coach to continue researching that, putting that together and bringing it back to us at the next council meeting. Is that satisfactory?
Yes, sir.
Boarding committee? General Congress, yes, sir.
I have a question to ask.
Yes, sir.
Jonathan Yarborough from the Presbyterian Church, when we met with the building department, it was not a ranking to be the only agenda for the meeting this evening, part of that decision that council need to do was required for us to proceed with a building permit. I was not aware that we were in a first and second reading situation. Is there any way that council action this evening could?
Where did you purchase that building permit?
State Bureau.
Where did you purchase that building permit?
From the building department. That, it was just a question, I was not, we were Russell Construction and us, and from our conversation with the building department, we're under the impression that if council approved the shared cost of the drainage, we'd be able to proceed with the building permit. I just need some clarification, I didn't realize that it would not be called up for this evening.
Expending funds takes two presentations, you know, with the council, unless you suspend the rules and, and move forward with it. Council, what do you deny, what do you wish you?
I'd offer a motion that we suspend the rules.
Okay, we have a motion to suspend the rules, go back and readdress this. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second to suspend the rule.
Councilmember Robbins.
Yes.
Gill.
Yes.
Thornton.
Yes.
Gant.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Don't wait, Coach, run out of here.
Thank you for addressing that.
Okay, now, go ahead and give approval for the motion to expend fifteen thousand dollars shared cost with Churchill.
I want to have a motion that we put fifteen thousand dollars towards the expense to, with the Presbyterian Church on North Creek Street, and they, they are agreement to tie the additional expense to break the problem, drainage problem.
We have a motion, we have a second.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second.
Councilmember Robbins.
Yes.
Gill.
Yes.
Thornton.
Yes.
Gant.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Thank you, Greg. Thank you, sir.
Table Congress, both. Public comment, any of our citizens here? Yes, ma'am.
My name is McCarrie, I am a citizen of Illinois County.
No, wait a minute, you live in Wetumpah?
Yes, I do.
Okay, where do you live?
Oh, Young Street.
Okay, yes, ma'am.
And I want to make a comment about the parks and recreation because I have an eight year old. She plays at the sports complex, she wants to do soccer, but thank God I have a job I can provide that for her. Most families don't. I grew up here in Wetumpah, went to school in Wetumpah, the children softball, everything, even Mr. and Mrs. Jordan, I trained out pretty well, I think so. But you don't have those same parents that I had growing up in the neighborhood that you've been in, that you saw murders and everything else, robbing, everything, starting at thirteen years old. So for the comment to say parks and recreation is not needed, it is, because you need after school programs, Boys and Girls Club is not funded properly. So you still have people of my color roaming the streets in the daytime because their parents are maybe working or just not paying attention to them. So yes, parks and recreation is needed in this community, because if you would have that, you probably would have less, less foolishness going on. Because my mom kept me out of street, these parents don't do that for their kids now. So you need something to offset some of the crime that's going on now. Most parents can't afford to send their child to the sports complex, the newly sports complex, but you have to have money when you go there. Your kid's hungry when you go there, okay? It's money. It takes money to sign up for softball. You know, parents don't have that. If you don't have a full-time job or somebody, your family's back and you, to get your child there. I paid three hundred dollars out of my pocket before my child was even on the softball team to be in the sports complex that's there now. Direct was free to us when, when I was younger, direct was free to us to go and play softball. We need something for our youth, not just black, white as well. I mean, and me, I'm thirty-three years old, I see this, my child grows up here, I'm thinking about moving because there's nothing here for her to do. And that's, I'm sharing money out of my pocket, senior parent, yes. But I pay money out of my pocket for my child to do what I'm a person do, to be in an environment that she can see clearly. But when she walk at my front door, it's kids walking down the street, thirteen, twelve years old, smoking cigarettes, weed, yes. In the same community that the killing happened, I grew up there. And the reason that I got out is because my mom did not let me go around the corner and play with those kids. I was at home studying school activities. Parents don't have the money to do that. I mean, you might think it's funny, but it's not. It's reality. This is a reality check, okay? I work full-time, but I want to prepare my daughter for the work. I don't want her segregated to play with her, all her team is white, we have two other black kids there, because their parents can afford that. Other black kids can't afford that. Makes you end on whoever. You have to know your sisters in your city. Who has it out, who doesn't have it out? How much money the household bringing in? You know kids in the level community can't go up and just go up the park? They don't have money to go there. So reality check starts here. If you, you said it's a team, you all are a team to bring the community together, not to divide. And it looks divided for where I live, sports complex, direct center for where I grew up. Yes, people from this, they could have traveled to Montgomery to play a tournament. We can have the same thing here. If you can open up the sports complex for a tournament, open the next item for something, we have to have something. I work at a correctional facility. Kids coming in fifteen, thirteen years old because parents don't have, they lose guys. Yes, it's a parent's responsibility, but us as a community, we have to put something where the kids be involved in. So sometimes it can deter from going and breaking into someone's house. So yes, it's a team, and we need to be building a team for the community. Everybody on this podium has ran toward a position, vote, black, white, whoever. You got your votes and promises that you made to the community, needs to be done, seriously. You don't want to go back and say, well, I ran, I ran on this, but it never happened. We ran on funding MLK. We ran on getting something for the, the children to do. It has not happened. Our children just, can't go in the sports complex and play. It costs money. Money that a lot of people don't have. I don't have it all the time, but I make ways for my daughter to be where she needs to be at all times, because I'm their parent, we're going to be in control of where she goes. I don't want her to go in the level and be in the park all the time. Understand what I'm saying? Killings happened, it just happened. She could have been there, but I got her. I have the time and the patience to do that. Most parents don't. You understand what I'm saying? You've been there, you've talked to parents in the area, you ran in that district, people voted for you, including myself. So I need to see something change. Most of my classmates are gone, they don't even want to come back because it's nothing to do. We need something to do.
Thank you.
Thank you. I don't, I didn't hear any one of you say.
I, I would like, I would like to clarify by remark, I think when I said, is it needed? It's not, I, I didn't mean, do we need it? I think it's something we will need in the future. What I meant by that, and I probably chose a poor choice of words, is that when we, this council has hired a lot of people, and we did that because we were severely understaffed in a lot of areas. And we are at, I think fifty-three percent was the last estimate of our budget in salaries. And the state recommends forty-eight to forty-nine percent, is that right?
Less than fifty.
Yes, less than fifty. So my question, should it been not, do we need this? Because yes, we need it, but is this something we can afford right now when we're at fifty-three percent of our budget on salaries, and we should be under fifty? Hopefully soon we will get that, you know, as the budget grows, that will go under and we can look at hiring this person. And I think that is something we will do in the future, probably sooner than later. But as for right now, I don't think we need to do that because of where we're at.
Let me come back to that. Not saying that you have to do it like tomorrow.
Right.
But if you had the participation of the council to go out in the communities to get people together, some stuff, you don't have to just say, I'm going to put money, I have to do this. If we know this is going to benefit our kids, some parents will get out and up early in the morning to do things that we can do as a community together to help build Wetumpah. It's not all about the money, or can you fund this or can you fund that? It's about let my child have somewhere to go if I have to go to work and pick them up at five, six o'clock. That, that's the main idea here.
Have you heard the Voice of Girls?
Yes, I have.
The city done us forty thousand dollars a year to that, and has the last four years to forty thousand dollars in my salary.
Then don't take care of my household.
That is the largest.
And you talking about raising the community on forty thousand?
This is the largest amount.
I mean, that's everything you said.
Ms. Gill, the police department sergeant Ella Roberts puts on one of the most successful summer youth programs I know in this central region, and how many kids went through that last year?
Six hundred.
Six hundred more than twenty-seven. And I, you know, I salute them and I salute her for what she does.
Right, that's great.
And that's, that's what we're trying to do, we're a small city, but.
Right, and I think the smaller that we are, the better we can come together. We don't have a lot of people, but we have a lot of people that's divided.
You said you grew up in the level, which you're up there now, and you're on those levels?
Yes.
Okay, do this for me. And, and. Okay, um, do this for me, and, and I help a lot of people.
Right.
Okay, and I'm, I'm not boasting when I say.
Oh, I saw.
The church is right here, if you got, if you have a church that cannot afford to play, come see me.
I will.
Let, let me know that, and I'll get them into that meeting some, some way, somehow, uh, there's some other things, we got a guy sitting back here writing, uh, right now, that, that I can't even talk about. There's some things that we're doing for the youth in this community, that's gonna allow them to have participation, uh, in that group, to do, and we're working on that today, the survey is going on, but, uh, it doesn't need to break out into newsmaker tomorrow, because there's some things that we can't talk about yet until it comes to get. So, um, recreation is very important to this community, I sponsored a little league team for twelve years, Bonnie Hump played on my team, I don't know how much good that did, lucky, but he is today. But anyhow, we touched a lot of the lives over the years with government, and, uh, and, and not a big little part of us, but you come to me, if you have somebody that cannot come up with the money to play, I promise you, I'll work it out between the mayor and that league, they'll get the play.
Thank you.
Thank you, okay, Mr. Mitchell?
How y'all doing, man?
Come forth where I can hear you.
I can hear you right here. My question is, my recreation is, well, uh, how much did it cost for the completion of this park of recreation, how much did it cost?
So far, so, so softball and.
The whole park, is it completed now, is it completed?
No, no, there's still football going in there, there's still soccer going in there, conservation department is building a major archery course over there at no cost to us, uh, youth fishing, we're, we're dealing with the fishery department, state and I would have to stop those ponds where we can have youth fishing. We've been over there, and as of last week, look, it's, coach is chasing money right now.
We understand that, but my question, how much money is gonna be put into Martin's Pizza, that's not for that, how much can a big spit that, that total out of the, the.
Well, right now, if we got six hundred and forty-five thousand dollars sitting there now.
Okay.
That's targeted to go.
So you said six hundred and twenty thousand dollars, it's targeted to go towards the Martin's King Center?
Toward the complex, I would guess.
The, the Martin's King Center, it's.
You're talking about a building?
No, 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 the, the renovation, the replacement of that, totally, who's the basketball coach, they got, they got the one that go play basketball tomorrow, that, that, that's gone, uh, the kids ain't got the money coming up there, either try to play softball, that's gone, they didn't have that, that's gone. So, and that, 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 that whole state, the, 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 they just stay there there, well, what, what's the deal of the state stand, they're, they're, they're doing nothing there, so my question to you, what is, when is, how are you planning on completing the Martin's King Center with the six hundred thousand dollars, whatever you say.
No, we'll go as far as the money will let us go, then we'll go back and chase more money.
So what kind of plan do you have made out there now?
If, if you take, as of right now, as of right now, when we went to the bond market and secured money.
How much did you secure?
Six million. Six million dollars.
Right.
To go with six million that we already owed, which was owing twelve million.
So, six million?
For us to go back to the bond market, we need to have paid down enough, when we, when we got the six and added to the six already owed, we virtually kept the same payment that we had, because we refinanced five, five and a half percent money, back down to two and two and a half, two and a half percent money. Now, if, if, if the interest rates don't go crazy on us, and you get back to May of seventeen, you can go back to the bond market, and still not exceed what you had borrowed before, but possibly pick up anywhere between two and a half to three million dollars, and if you can do that and keep the same payment that you have, then you can finish off a lot of projects.
What kind of plans have you made for the Martin's King Center, you mean it's on paper? I can see some.
All I have seen is.
I said, I seen a tree that been cut between the, the, what kind of thing, I just can't see a lick of the football field, but come down, get that round, fourteen, you know, that dirt pile.
Last time you were in here, you talked about that pile of dirt.
Yeah, I'm getting a lot of dirt.
Well, we don't.
The Martin's King Center, now, how much money do you have now?
Mayor?
That's what my question.
Six hundred and forty-five thousand dollars.
So, what, what kind of plans, when you looking at all that six hundred something dollars for the Martin's King Center, what are we gonna put up there, what are we gonna put basketball hoop, give them back?
Kids walk down the street, they ain't gonna let their ball no more, oh, let's go, they can't come down there and, and pay money to play, now you say you gonna pay for people to play softball, pay money to come back, I'm gonna have you lined up. I'm gonna be there.
You scared of being there, now?
You're not gonna be there.
You just, just think when you say that.
How more you gonna help me?
You know, what I'm saying is, we need to try to figure out what is, what's the plan, what's the plan for the Martin's Center, I would have dared to go through that.
You, you have a tone?
I, I'm scared to walk through it.
Yeah, I, I can respond to that.
I'm scared to walk through it.
I think so much ago, most of the people in this room that, that was here then, probably, when we, uh, uh, unfolded the, uh, plan that, uh, had been done, uh, conceptual drawing.
Right.
And, uh, that's what's been planned, um.
Wouldn't you say?
And specifically put, how you gonna have, uh, that drawing completed with the, with the items that you just mentioned, uh, basketball court, it had to go, that old field had to go.
Had to go.
If you gonna put what you taught, what was proposed from our conceptual drawing, Mr. Columbus Cook did, and was agreed on.
Okay, at the bottom, we, that was, what we put there, is that a football field?
Football field.
Okay.
And soccer, on the same field.
On the same field.
Yes.
So, nowhere in there, that basketball is, is staying in the city, uh, we talk to these kids.
We have a basketball court, it's a lot better shape over in, uh, the level.
No, nobody want to play basketball. You do it down there, we talking about the Martin's City Center.
But you just asked him where can you shoot basketball.
We need somewhere like the sports complex, where you feel safe.
What, what, see, now, now, no, no, I, I wouldn't say that true, now, now, that playing basketball, would you, would you send your?
I wouldn't have sent him over there, I'd have sent over there and watched it, the big young ones over there, and, and the young adults, uh, terrorize all the little people.
I got my first baseball suit from the, 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 and that's how I like to be.
Well, Mr. Isaac Thomas is over there, good brother.
For people that want to mentor, but my question is, that is Martin's King Center, when would be, when you expect?
I told you, come down there, watch, hear you.
When will we be able to, 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 for completion of the drawing that Columbus bought, when, when, when you think we can see, two thousand and fifty, fifty-one, when? Next month, next year?
I think.
I wanna be able to see, one day, you really know, you give me no complete answer, you never wanna give an answer, I'm asking all the time, when you expect, you expect the completion of that, of the drawing, I'm talking about that, when? We got six hundred and fifty thousand dollars, so when? Come on, man, we need to know for August, we need to know for August.
Nancy, I don't know, I, I don't know if I can give you an answer.